Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for coming to our city council meeting tonight. Let's see, we have some scouts in the audience tonight, and certainly welcome the Cub Scouts, Cub Scout troop here, probably in La Grange area. So, I want to thank you all for coming, and hopefully you can learn something about government tonight, and I know it's part of your job to try to attend city council meetings, things like that, so certainly glad to have you all. I would ask any of those who have phones tonight, please either silence them or turn them off, and if you need to make a, get a phone call, please excuse yourself and maybe go out in the hall and discuss your business, but certainly we appreciate you being here. We'll try to work through our agenda tonight as quickly and diligently as we can. Have about 20 items to discuss, and we'll try to get through them as they come in order. At this time, we always like to say our pledge of allegiance to our flag, so if everyone would stand with me at this moment, let's say our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd ask our madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trey.
Here.
Mary.
Here.
Leslie.
Here.
Um.
Here.
Andrea.
Here.
Bill.
Yes, here.
And, here, Elsie, present.
And that being said, we have a quorum present, so I'll now call the city council meeting to order. Okay, to all the council, you have an agenda before you this evening. Not realizing if anyone would like to add or suggest an addition to the agenda, I would ask and entertain anyone that would like to add anything to our agenda at this time. I would like, myself, to add a board of adjustment appointment. I would like to make that appointment tonight, and I'd like to insert it under item 16 after the standing committee reports, and that would be a board of adjustment appointment, an appeals here in La Grange. I'd like to make that appointment. I would add to that, tonight, I'd also like to add a fourth member to our parks committee. It's Trey Kammer. Trey Kammer, I had him so busy in so many other committees, he still wanted to be on another committee, so I want to make sure that I meet his wishes, and he enjoys, have been with our parks for many years, and we just left a parks board meeting tonight, and Trey was there, and ask if he could be appointed as a fourth member to that particular committee, so I'd like to add that after my board of adjustment appointment, to add Trey to that. Are there any other corrections that anyone would like to place into the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion that agenda be approved as presented?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, a motion made by Debbie Pollard, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, you have before you tonight our minutes from our February 4th meeting, so at this time, I would ask our clerk to read those minutes for their eventual approval.
Approval of agenda. Councilman Lamblynn made motion to approve February agenda, second by councilwoman Pollard. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Mayor Black adds consumer price index after number 18 on the agenda to discuss with city council. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Approval of minutes for January 7th, city council meeting. Councilman Essenpri made motion to approve January 7th, 2019, city council minutes, second by councilwoman Carter. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Payables for January 2019. Councilwoman Davenport made motion to approve January payables, second by councilwoman Pollard. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Financial reports. Councilwoman Pollard made motion to approve financials, second by councilwoman Davenport. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Presentation of 2017-18 audit. Kevin Fisher with RFH presented the 2017-18 audit to the city council. Councilwoman Carter made motion to accept audit, second by councilwoman Pollard. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Public comment. Steven Wright with Troop 200 is working on his citizenship. Merritt Bage, Rick Noel, 1180 Patons Creek, commented on lowering the speed limit on Main Street. Richard W. Rankin, 519 Horton Road, made comment on purchasing land at 309 West Main. Elizabeth Kirkwood, 1515 Dawkins Road, had question on audit. And City of La Grange Foundation. Albert Harrison, 114 McMakey Manor, made comment on purchase of 309 West Main and executive session. David Newton, 1611 Road Court, made comment on restrooms at parks and maintaining the green space. La Grange Main Street report. Karen Eldridge was not present, but a report was handed out before city council. La Grange Utilities report. Ted Chisholm was present for that. Nomination of City of La Grange Police Chief. Mayor Black discussed on his nomination for police chief. Discussions among city council. Councilwoman Pollard approved nomination of Greg Colette as police chief of City of La Grange, second by councilwoman Lamblynn. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Introduction and first reading of ordinance 1-2019, closing Sumac Alley. Councilman Davenport introduced ordinance 1-2019 for first reading, second by councilwoman Kammer. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Second reading of public hearing will be March 4th, 2019. Eden Parkway Extension. Jim Urban, Oldham County Planning and Development, explained to city council about authorizing Mayor Black to sign an agreement for consulting services for Eden Parkway Extension. The agreement is between the City of La Grange and Oldham County Fiscal Court. Councilman Davenport made motion to approve authorization for Mayor Black to sign agreement, second by councilwoman Kammer. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Committee assignments. Mayor Black discussed with city council on the established committees. Standing committee reports. La Grange Historic District Guideline Committee. Mary Bolton, Chairman of Historic District Guidelines, announced a meeting on February 12th, 2019, at 6:30 before the historic district meeting at 7:00 to review the first three sections of the guidelines. New appointment to La Grange Utilities Commission. Mayor Black nominated councilwoman Carter to La Grange Utilities Commission. Councilwoman Essenpri made motion to appoint Elsie Carter to La Grange Utilities Commission, second by councilwoman Wright. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Oldham Reserve Bond Payments Discussions. Mayor Black discussed the bond payment being made on February 12th, 2019, for $1,1069.44 for the Oldham Reserve debt. Property purchase of 309 West Main Street. Mayor Black discussed on purchase of property in the Buildings Budget Finance and Utilities Commission, chaired by Trey Kammer. Bill Lamblynn and Elsie Carter will decide what to do with the House. Beach Craig Miles, City Attorney, mentioned liens on the property. Mayor Black asked for a motion to approve purchase of property at 309 West Main Street for $35,000. Councilwoman Carter made motion, second by councilwoman Bolton. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero. Consumer Price Increase. Mayor Black mentioned to city council that they are entitled to a 1.9% increase in their pay. No motion made. Unfinished Business. Councilman Lamblynn asked about the cameras in the parks. New Business. Councilwoman Davenport asked about the cones at city hall and the parking issue. Mayor Black thanked Public Works and Police Department for the work they have done because of the weather. He mentioned about part-time help for Public Works, and Elizabeth Newton was hired as secretary and art brush for flowers. This meeting can be viewed on Channel 184 or YouTube. New Donut Shop in Town, Dough Baby Dough. Stephanie Winter, one-year anniversary with the city. Chocolate Crawl is February 9th. Debbie Pollard was mentioned in published copy of Kentucky League of Cities. Elizabeth Kirkwood, 1515 Dawkins Road, is proud and glad of city council, and Tracy Ming, 604 Lakewood Drive, said she is proud of the mayor and council. Announcements, next meeting date, March 4th, 2019, at 6:30. Adjourned by councilwoman Davenport, made motion to adjourn at 9:36, second by councilwoman Kammer. The motion in favor of passed unanimously, eight to zero.
You did a great job in reading all those minutes.
Thank you.
You really did. You got out the word unanimously, and you never will forget that word, because that's a hard word to say, but I honestly think that, have you always read those minutes, or have we just approved them as presented?
No, we just approved them.
That's what I thought, and I caught you off-guard, and I appreciate you stepping up and doing that so beautifully, because you did a wonderful job, Stephanie, I want to tell you that.
Thank you, guys.
You know, especially when I caught you off-guard. Because typically, this city council will just move on, they've all seen the minutes, and they'll adopt them and improve them, but I'm actually used to reading those minutes in this meeting, letting the public hear them again, and then letting the council refresh themselves with what was done last meeting, and then have a vote on it. So, the council, you have heard the reading of those minutes from our last meeting. Do I entertain a motion that they be approved as presented?
I have a question.
Sir.
Yes, on the page two, at the bottom paragraph, property purchases at 309 West Main Street, I, there, it's not, it said, the Budget and Finance Committee Utilities chaired by Trey Kammer, Bill Lamblynn, and Elsie Carter would decide what to do with the House. I don't know where that came from.
I'll look at those again.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Bill, could you point that out again? I'm sorry, I did not follow you.
Okay, page two.
Okay, I'm there.
Bottom paragraph.
Okay.
Property purchase of 309 West Main Street.
Yes.
Okay, if you read the sentence there, it doesn't, none of the, I don't know, Trey was not involved, Elsie was not involved, the Utilities Committee certainly was not involved, there's something, it's not, there's a mix up there.
I had a question on that one as well.
I agree.
So, the way that it was written and the way that it was read was how I remember it being, but I know that there was another committee that looked at that property, which is, I guess, some additional minutes that we've received today. So, I was just curious which committee was going to handle looking into this property. Just because there is a Buildings Committee, I know there's some other things, Budget, Finance, Utilities, but the one that met there was the Historic District Committee. So, my question at this, at some point was going to be, which committee would you prefer to have look into that property?
Yeah, Trey, I do see that, but I think the mayor did ask the Historic District Guidelines Committee to look at that for some reason, and we did, so.
I agree. After our council meeting, I think he asked that committee to look into it, so I didn't respond back to that email just for transparency purposes, and I just, now that we're in this meeting, I just would like to know which group you would like to look into it.
Well, actually, they've already looked into it, and I had them look into it because the reason I chose that committee, no other committee had yet even had a meeting scheduled, and I thought it was important that we tried to take a quick look at the property, because I did not want the responsibility of letting the department, that the House sit there and further go into disrepair. The Historical District Guidelines Committee, yes, has been working along historical issues, and I felt that this particular property is certainly in the historical district, it's protected probably on the historical register, and to give a report back to this council, this meeting, I chose them based on the fact that they've been involved in all this historical discussion, and I wanted them to give an honest report, especially with former Mayor Lamblynn there, to give this council a full report tonight on the condition of the House and what we should be doing to protect it from any further disrepair, and that's the reason I chose this committee, to go there and inspect it and bring a report here tonight.
Just one more clarifying question, since we're, like I said, I was going to talk about this later, but do you prefer, I'm assuming we're going to go over those minutes at some point, that the Historic District Commission continues to move forward with that property, or would you prefer the Buildings?
No, that's the only interest I had right now, is to make sure we get the property protected, listen to the recommendation night. I did not want water seeping into the property, if in fact we needed to address it and provide some money to get that corrected, and I didn't want to be held accountable for the property to go further downhill and let it sit there another couple of months and not be attended to. That's the only reason I acted on it as I did.
Okay.
That's the, that's all the involvement that committee needs to have with that property, because honestly, I felt they were the most versed in historical preservation based on the work they've already done, and certainly Mayor Lamblynn.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions on the minutes? Do we have a motion, a second to approve them?
Make the motion to approve the meeting minutes as read.
Second.
Second by Debbie Pollard. Motion made by Trey Kammer. Any further discussion on the minutes? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Okay, city council, you have your payables in front of you tonight. Heather Woodcox is here tonight in the audience. Heather deals a lot with her payables, as does Stephanie, but Heather is very familiar with all these payables that have been paid, and if you have any questions about any of them, she'd be glad to come forward and try to explain any payable that you're not familiar with, or you'd like clarification on. So, please look through those and see perhaps if you have any questions about any one of them.
I did have a question. I'm trying to remember back from last year, so I apologize, but there was a purchase of a vehicle for the police department?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm reading this correctly, so that came under the alcohol fund?
Yes.
Okay. And I felt like we had talked about that last year.
Yeah, I think it was approved.
From moving forward, so, okay. Just want to make sure.
There's actually two.
Two vehicles?
Two Durangels. Yep.
I also have a question. I'm not sure if this would be pertinent to Bill's pay, but I'm noticing that there are a lot of different, either repairs or upkeep that are being done by several different people. Would it be beneficial, or have you looked into, like, putting all of the vehicles to be repaired at one particular, either the dealership or wherever, so that it'd be more consistent in terms of pricing or consistency?
I think the police, they go to Pennzoil for their gas and oil, or oil changes and stuff like that. They actually get half off on oil changes through Pennzoil. And then, as far as the vehicle maintenance, I know the police use Champion's and K&amp;G, I believe, for their tires and stuff like that, and I know Public Works, it just depends on which vehicles broke down, or needs work, and where it can be fixed, like the 550s, I think he has to take them out to emergency, or Champion.
Okay.
So, I think it really, it's something I can talk to them about and see. I know Mayor's been talking a lot about shopping around for prices if something goes wrong. Ask a couple of different people in the area before taking it straight to them and having it done.
Okay.
So, but it's something that I'll speak to them about.
Yeah, we try our best.
Is this microphone working, that one?
It's on.
It's hard, unless you get up on top of that podium.
I can move.
It's hard, I think, for people to hear you.
There. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
I couldn't hear you back.
But Ms. Wright, what we try to do, we try to use all of our, certainly our city folks that operate business in our city, but we don't give any of them just a carte blanche to quote any price. I'm very strict on asking for prices, whether it's towers, whether it's engines, whether it's oil changes, and trying to make sure that everyone knows that we're checking prices and trying to make sure we've got the interest of the city in mind at all times, and that goes as far as our city buses as well, our city bus. They have a lot of different mechanical needs. Aaron's Auto out here, he's basically the bus repair guy for our city buses, but yet we try to shop our tires right here locally and make sure we're bidding them out and getting different quotes. Okay, any other questions on the payables, from anyone? Please look at them, and you're welcome to ask questions. In connection with the payables, we also have the financials tonight, we have our bank accounts, all of our different bank accounts, and also our statement of revenue and expenditures, so that's all included as well before you. So, let's look at the bank accounts and also our financials, and if anyone has any questions on those, these financials are through February the 28th. What we try to do there is look at our budgeting for the year and see perhaps where we are with remaining percentages of account balances, to try to ensure that everything's running accurately across the board in terms of trying to get us to June the 30th. So, does anyone have any questions on those couple pages? Either your bank accounts and/or your statement of revenue and expenditures. As we look at these statements, this is how we are probably, I've asked Stephanie already to start looking at her fourth quarter, to try to look at the historical data from the first three quarters, so we can project what was to be spent, what remains to be spent, and see if we can project out to June 30th as we get ready to start our budget discussions. So, we're very much talking about that daily. I want to make sure that each fund category is adequately funded, and we make it to June 30th. There will be some, probably some changes, maybe some over expenditure in some columns, but hopefully we'll have some reserve monies in other areas to draw from. So, you're welcome to ask any questions, either on two of those items at this point. Does everyone understand them? Do they see, do you understand what you're looking at? If you do, that's great. I know it's a lot of paperwork there, but it's all of our different balances, with our police department, our alcohol budget, mining minerals, municipal aid, road department, general administration, the whole operation of city government, on those statement, on those balances before you. No questions? If not, for the payables and the financials and the bank accounts, I'll entertain a motion that they be paid as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, financials be paid as presented.
A motion made by councilman Davenport, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright, any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Okay, tonight, we have a bid opening. Mr. Corey Rusnek, he's our Director of Public Works, will come forward and, if you can tear those open for me, please. I mean, we have two. We have two bids tonight. I always like to open the bids publicly, so everyone understands that we're trying to be transparent as we can, so we have two bids tonight, and I'll let Corey Rusnek tell the council and the audience what these bids are about and what they're to do in our city street system. So, Corey, welcome tonight. You may proceed.
Welcome.
And make sure you talk into the microphone, so the audience can hear you.
It's a little closer, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. We've got West Greens Drive, it's been kind of an ongoing problem, so I'm going to give you a little brief overview of what we got. We've got several complaints, see how this thing turns it up. So, we've got some engineering done by Garber Schilton, and it's a little bit fuzzy, but this is from, looking from Kentucky 53 all the way back, it's about 700 feet long, back towards Walmart. You've got Big O, Wendy's, forced car wash, Alka-Poco. It's kind of a, it was something we considered doing in-house, but there's a lot of utilities, and it's a pretty tedious area.
You're talking about the Wendy's intersection, correct?
Correct.
Everyone's familiar with the Wendy's property? It'd be anything along the Wendy's property, running back so many feet.
Right. This comes in, and this is the second part, let me do this one first. Now, this is from 53. We had originally anticipated, when we got the drawings done, there'd be a manable curb, but the state came through when they did the overlay on 53. They actually redid this, it was destroyed, it was in shambles, so that's what kind of triggered a lot of it. But they've got, over here, I'll show you some pictures, kind of see what we've got going on. This is looking from Highway 53 West down Grange Drive, center line, which was a dangerous picture to take. This is more down towards Alka-Poco, looking east. This is on the Wendy's side, towards poor drainage. We intend to, from, we're going to tie an existing curb, curb most of it, give it more of a definite spot. There's eight catch basins total going in, and it's all going to drain down toward Walmart parking lot. Of course, there's going to be concrete ditching. Catch basins, we've got piping to go in. This is a little further down. This has always been a troubled spot. It actually drains from here, goes across Wendy's into Alka-Poco. Some of it, it's going to greatly reduce the amount of water going into the parking lot. This is on, coming off of Crimson Way, isn't existing, what used to be a trench drain that was, culvert was put in and overtopped with concrete, it's clogged and pretty much deteriorated, which, in turn, that's what this is. See, it's kind of degraded, needs some improvement. And the car wash, this is a trench drain going across their drive, which this currently, it fills with water, the property owner's actually pumping water out of this currently, so it'll definitely do.
I'm sorry, Corey, what did you say, the property owner, what?
They're pumping the water out of the front ditch with the trash pump. It's all failed, it's collapsed, so this is where it's kind of sitting. Of course, looking at Big O, their entrance, their entrance will stay mostly the same. A lot of your curbing, or your piping, will go in front of their apron in the road, so it keeps the cost down a little bit. And last but not least, right pointed towards 53. So, all this will have curbing coming back down, just kind of the overview. We've got a million pictures. Overall, there'll be curbing more or less down through all these areas, tying all this back in to kind of channel the water back away from. It's draining through everybody's parking lots currently, and at least get some of the flooding.
Thank you, Corey. We have two bids tonight that we have opened. The first being Louisville Pavings and Construction. And you have quite a bit of different items laid out here, Corey. I didn't know if you wanted to try to ward this bid tonight. I don't know if you-
Uh, if I need to review, I'll go back with Mr. Garber.
I was going to say, I didn't, I didn't know if you had time to review these because they're pretty difficult to review, I would say. They're, they're quite a bit. Louisville Pavings and Construction. Louisville Pavement Company is pleased to offer their following proposal for the above-mentioned project. Lump sum total being $163,890. Can we do it ourselves, Corey?
We can, we're a little slower at it, but-
But $163,890 from Louisville Pavings and Construction, that's their bid. And we have one other bid tonight. It's from Bowen, Bowen Excavating, B-O-W-E-N, in Excavating. Massey School Road, Barry Bowen of Grange, Kentucky. His bid is $148,255. Not included rock excavation, and that will be $200 per yard. So basically, that's the two bids we have before the council tonight. Any further discussion, Corey, on those bids? Did you have any projections or estimates on what you thought that may come in at?
That's probably about, probably about what we anticipated. So if we have any technical questions, Garber is here, just in case.
Mr. Garber's here. If, if in fact approved, do we have money anywhere in our budget to be funding this project?
Yes.
We do?
Yeah.
Anyone have any further questions for Corey? And I guess you're going to take the next few weeks to review the bids and come back next meeting for approval?
Yeah.
For, for denial?
A little ward, right. Ward and deny.
I have a question, but this may be for David, I'm not sure. There's three or four parking spaces right off of that that you pull into, off of that, that street that's in front of Alka Poco.
On the subway?
Yes. Well, if you do curbing, what happens to those?
Uh, they will remain.
So the curbing's going to follow in?
Right, it'll tie around into that spot.
Okay.
Some of that will still drain through the parking lot, but it will be decreased because there's two catch basins on Wendy's.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Are you able to expand the right-hand turn coming onto 53 from Grange Drive at all?
Going on to 53?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the radius will stay the same, as far as I know. Is that the same?
I guess what I was saying, sort of like how the Kroger entrance is to 53, so you've got your left-hand turn that can only hold so many vehicles, and then you've got a little bit of a right-hand turn. So if you're making a right-hand turn, you don't necessarily have to wait for the light to be green.
Right, no, we didn't look to widen the road, no. Hasn't been any issues with stacking up. Everybody can get out, just usually what triggers that.
Right-hand turn, cart, going in, going in the street, going south, that, that curb will remain the same because when tractor-trailers have to deal with that curb there, they do have to swing out into the, which probably is typical.
They backed it up when the state redid that all the way back to the light pole, so it can't go any further.
Okay.
Now, the one thing I was hoping we may have room for to have to go over this with Corey without widening the throat at 53 was possibly letting there be a right-turn lane. I frequent that road all the time, and for some reason, it stays red for a long time for people to try to get on 53. So if there's enough room, we may be able to work, work that out. It may have been the same area you were talking about.
It was.
Okay, so you get caught there a lot too.
Yep.
Are the trucks that are going into Walmart, are they coming down that road at all? Or are they going by Chris, not Crystal Drive?
Walmart delivery trucks?
Yeah, Walmart, Mark delivery trucks, because they would probably tear it up quite a bit more. I would think it's a smaller road.
Right. It's, that was kind of part of the problem, the curbing was further in. And they just, they, it was non-mountable curb, so they were just tearing it to pieces.
I think that's where we added some thick concrete there, so when they do go over it, it won't tear it up.
Part of the reason why I ask, I've seen people do it. So they'll cut across Wendy's and that, where the Ponderosa entrance is, and then they'll quickly make a right-hand turn and shoot on down 53. So I don't know, it sort of feels like a safety issue as well.
We can look into it.
Okay.
Added cost.
Added cost, uh, yeah. It's always an added cost.
So Corey, this bid that we've got on Bowen, that's not a true bid there because there's going to have to be added to it?
Depends, there might have to be a field change because we have a 12-inch water main.
I heard something about adding gravel or something to-
It was if they have to hammer out rock. Depends if, if we have to go underneath one of their utility lines, we're going to be hammering a lot of rock out, so. Yeah, most contractors exclude that from their bids.
Okay, if there's no further questions from the council. Corey, David, thank you all for presentation tonight. Corey, you have anything else tonight you'd want to say to the council?
That's all.
Other than thank you for all your snow removal work and all the other work you do throughout this whole city.
Make the snow stop.
Corey and them stay busy doing a lot of work throughout the whole, whole town here, so appreciate that, Corey.
Appreciate it.
Okay, item eight is a city bus report from Katie Beckto. What I like to do, what I'm going to try to do is, in order to get some publicity and get these services that we have in our city laid more aware of, I want our different leaders, our different directors to come forward occasionally and talk about what, what they do and what their service is to the city. But Katie, she runs our public bus, and I really didn't have any idea till I became mayor how much people love this bus and depend on this bus to get to and from work, to and from the doctor, to and from Rawlings. I just, it was just really amazing to me. But I've asked Katie to come forward tonight and Katie's a great public speaker, and I'm just glad to have-
No, I'm not.
Make sure you speak up, Katie, but welcome tonight. And I'd like for you to tell not only this council and this crowd, but everyone that's going to be viewing this, that we need public bus riders, so welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. I will say I am not a very good public speaker, but I will do my very best. Some of this information that I am going to provide tonight, I did already go over at the City Place meeting that we had previously, but I would like for the public also to hear some of the background to the bus. So some of it will be repetitive. I'd like to first start out by saying that I'm Katie Beckto. I'm Transportation Supervisor for Olden's Public Bus. I've been with the city now for a year, so I'm very happy. I love my job and I love the team that I work with over at City Hall. The Olden Public Bus has been in with the city since 2012, and we're very grateful to have the bus in our city. I will say that I think we're very fortunate because many of our sister cities around don't have a transit system like we have. I know that because I get calls all the time from cities even as far as Goshen, Henry County, Buckner, Crestwood, seeing if our bus will come out and transport people to and from the doctor, to their workplaces. Unfortunately, our bus only stays inside our city limits. And I've been asked many times, how can we acquire something like this? And it's difficult because a lot of our cities don't have that opportunity that we have. So I do think it's a blessing for the city of LaGrange. I also want to say, say that I believe it's important because as we want to grow the city and we want to grow businesses and continue the growth, we want to keep our residents here working in the city. And I think the bus provides that transportation for people who can't get to work. We take work riders every morning to and from work, and it's, they wouldn't be able to work if it wasn't for us. So I want to also at this time thank the organizations that actually fund the bus every year. Actually, the city of LaGrange funds half of our budget every year, along with the county putting in a very large contribution. And also TARC, who we are a subrecipient of. They actually fund a good portion of it. They also help us to acquire grant money that helps with funding of capital expenses as well as operating and things that sometimes go above and beyond what we don't see in our budget that we have to pay for. So we have, we can acquire grants to help with things like advertising, costs of additional expenses. I'd like to say that we do currently have three buses on our fleet. We only want, run one bus at a time daily on a fixed deviated route that runs from 5:45 a.m. to 5:45 p.m. Just some numbers to throw back on, last fiscal year, we transported over 17,000 riders throughout the year. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but it really, it is a lot of people that we've been able to help, you know, get around the city to appointments that they need, need to be at. Before I forget, I would like to introduce Becca Crowder as well. Becca, if you would stand, please. Becca is a true asset to our public bus system. If you ever were to call the bus home, you would either get myself or Becca. We work hand-in-hand daily, so whatever I can't answer, I'm sure Becca could as well. She plays a vital role in the bus system through LaGrange. So Mayor John Blackett asked me to come forward and kind of talk about awareness of the bus for the city because I don't think a lot of people know about the public bus. I know that before I started this position, I would see the bus, but I really didn't know much about it. So one of our goals this year, as we are entering the new fiscal year, is to bring more awareness to the city, not only to increase our ridership, which is really important, but to also increase revenue for, for the city. Because the more riders we have, the more money we can bring in. And hopefully it's less cost for the city to have to help pay for the bus. One of the reasons how we do that is we, we do bus rentals. I don't know if people are aware of that, but we do rent the bus out outside of the deviated schedule. So I know this last fiscal year, City Place has rented out the bus for their Louisville Orchestra performance, and the Blue Hydrangea event has rented out the bus, as well as Light Up LaGrange. Becca had a great idea this year for Olden County Day was to run Olden Public Bus in the parade. And she has volunteered to drive the bus, so I'm very excited about that. I think that would bring a lot of people in the community to see what the, what the bus is and hopefully generate some good questions and be able to, you know, give people feedback on that so we can generate more business. I keep saying, um, I'm sorry.
You're doing fine. You're doing great.
Thank you so much. So what I wanted to go over was the two goals that we had this year for our Olden Public Bus. And like I said, is to bring awareness to the community and to increase ridership. I would like to say that Becca and I are only two people, and that if anybody has ideas to bring business in for us, we would love to hear them. What I have put on the projector this evening is our Olden Public Bus schedule. It does list all the locations that we stop and what times on our fixed route daily, Monday through Friday. So one thing we're going to do is, what we have done is, in the back of where the agendas are at the entrance, we have put some of these for people to grab, as well as Becca has put together some very nice little goody bags back there if anybody wants to grab one on their way out. We gave these out this year at Olden County Day, and we had a few extras, so we wanted to bring those in for everybody. But this will give you an idea of where our bus stops daily and how, what time it stops throughout the day. We have kept the same schedule since we have started the bus, and it seems to be working. Obviously, there are some locations that get more ridership than others. And we do look, we do look yearly, we're going to be looking yearly, see if that schedule needs to stay the same or if it needs to change. Also listed on the, on the flyer that we put up here are, on the other side actually, are the fees that we charge. And I, I get calls all the time about our ridership fees. And right now, we charge a dollar per ride and 50 cents for anybody over 60 years old, and then free for three and under. One of the things we will be talking about this new fiscal year is possibly increasing those, those fees because of the cost of living and gas prices going up. We are on a very limited fixed budget to run our bus, and we have to think about how we can offset some of the expenses to keep the bus running, you know, year to year. So that's something that we will be talking about. Being a subrecipient of TARC, I know they charge, I believe, $250 or $275 a ride, so we are way under what the normal ridership fee would be. But we're going to have to look into that as we, as we are growing and as we, like I said, as cost of living things are going up. We have talked about increasing revenue for the bus by possibly doing some advertising. I know I've heard it's been brought up in the past about doing advertising maybe on the outside of the bus possibly. We are starting to look into that, as well as doing an advertising brochure that we could do with local businesses and put them out at the stops where we stop, where we get a lot of riders at, to help increase some revenue for the bus. As well as, it probably would be maybe a good idea once in a while to stop at some of our places that we visit a lot, places like Kroger, Walmart, Baptist Hospital, maybe set up a booth in, from Olden Public Bus to help distribute materials, to help grow ridership in those places that we, we frequently get our most riders from. What else? Mayor, do you have any questions for me?
Tell them how much it costs to ride the bus. I think it, you can ride the bus right now for $10 a month.
That's our work riders.
That's the work riders, and that's 20 rides.
That's 20 rides.
We were talking about, we were talking about that, and that's, that's a pretty fair amount to ride, you know?
Absolutely.
And we were looking at some of this budgeting, and TARC, TARC money's pretty much constant and, but we're just, I think people too, Mike, if we raised it five bucks a month, would they still enjoy riding our bus to work every day and bringing them home to their front door, you know? So we're looking at some of those things. But I don't have anything to add, Katie, other than what you and Becca do. You all do an awesome job every day. These folks call in and, and I can hear them on the radios, they're so appreciative of, this bus is going to get them to their dialysis out at the hospital. I mean, it's just unbelievable who's dependent on this bus, and yes, they actually are going to work too, other than the doctors' appointments.
Absolutely. We also, I wanted to add one last thing is that we are continuing to try to grow the advertisement of the bus. So Becca Crowder is in charge of our, we have an Olden Public Bus Facebook page, an Instagram page, and our link on the Grange KY website that Becca takes care of as well. Try to get more awareness out there to the public since social media is such a prevalent thing in our community that we have that out on those, on those certain media pages.
Katie, have you ever thought about, you said you were going to do pamphlets or something? Have you ever thought about putting a couple of, like, fairly large size signs where, you know, people go like by Walmart or by where the Southeast Christian is? Because I know a lot of people kind of carpool from different areas like that. Make them really big and visible.
That's, that's a very good idea, absolutely.
You know, just a couple of really big ones, and then you'd also have the pamphlets or, you know, like they do in Chicago, the big maps and everything.
Sure. I think that's a great idea. It's something that we can definitely look into. Thank you.
Another idea, kind of along that line, would be the shopping cart advertising at Kroger, right on the carts.
Oh, that's a, that's a good idea too.
You know, so any Kroger shopper would just be looking right at it and maybe-
We do take, we take people, Kroger's one of our big spots that we transport residents to.
Maybe they would have something, you know, kind of deal.
Thank you, that's a great idea.
I had one suggestion. Katie and Becca didn't go with it, but I told them, get up here at the four-way intersection here and get in, get in some kind of outfit and every afternoon, 4 o'clock, and say, "Ride me, public bus," you know? You know, and just stand there and jump up and down, but, but Katie-
I don't think that was in my job description.
Well, we might add it to your job description if we can get ridership up. And she said, "John, that's not a very good idea."
I don't think they would.
She said, "We do it, you go do it." I said, "I'll do it, if, if we can get ridership."
Sure.
So otherwise, Katie, you've done wonderful tonight. I know you were scared possibly to come up here tonight, but I knew you could do it. And you've done wonderful.
Thank you so much.
Does anyone have any further questions for Ms. Katie or Becca?
No, John.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say that I really think it would be advantageous for all of the council members to ride the bus themselves one time and see what it's like. I have done it.
It's a great idea.
And it really made me appreciate it even more.
It's very humbling.
I mean, yes, it is, and you see the need for it out there.
Katie's been telling me, "Ride the bus." And I haven't had time, but I'm going to ride it tomorrow, maybe.
Okay, I'm excited.
I might ride it to lunch and hope they come back and get me eventually.
John, at Mayor?
Yes, sir.
At one time, there was a plan to put a hot tub in the back, so.
Okay. Well, that being said, Katie, thank you so much for your presentation tonight and-
You're welcome.
And, and-
Thank you so much.
You won't have to come back for another year, probably. You did great.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, let's keep moving here, everyone. City Bus, item nine. Tonight, in your pocket, we have tried to give you the information that would prepare you for this discussion tonight. It's a request of funds for Eagle Creek Golf Course for sand traps repairs. Mr. Hazelton's here tonight. He, he sent, sent myself a letter based on, I asked him to do that, so I could forward that on to every city council person, so they could fully understand, as he being Parks Board Chairman, what the, what the consideration will be. I have talked to people, other than Mr. Hazelton, about this, and their honesty in golfing is to have good and decent sand traps, or they're not mud at the bottom of them. Usually, sand traps is, I think it's a, it's a hazard in a fair way, they call it a hazard, but at our golf course, I think if you hit into one, even though you're going to trap, they're so bad that the golfers just get down in it and go ahead and just throw it back out of the trap, and they consider no loss of shot. That's basically how bad some of these traps are. They, they just, they don't drain properly, there's really no sand left, and basically, you're playing down in a mud hole when you're going into what we call a typical sand trap at a golf course. Mr. Hazelton has sent, has forwarded a letter, and I also asked him to try to give us some history about where this money has actually come from, and it goes back to the actual days of the ODA development, when they were looking for green space to try to get a plan approved by Oldham County Planning Commission for a planned unit development, being Oldham Reserve, and they need a green space set aside to accommodate that planning, a planning zoning satisfaction on green space that needed to be set aside in the planned unit development of Oldham Reserve. Hope you all saw that in your, in your transfer of information, so I'll open it up for discussion. The request is on the table. We have it, that money in a bank account that's been basically set aside for anything at Eagle Creek, so the council, you have it before you at this time. Who would like to discuss the matter? Anyone?
Are you looking for a motion for discussion?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion to discuss it, or a motion to approve, or a motion to deny, just whatever the wishes of the council are at this point in time.
I'll make a motion for the request of funds for Eagle Creek Golf Course for the use of sand traps from the, say what account this was exactly?
Excuse me?
Does it say what account this was from? Is this the reserve account?
Reserve account.
Okay, from the reserve account.
Let me see that, please. Eagle Creek Golf Course Reserve at Farmers Bank, the total amount in the account is one fourteen eight oh one, as of two twenty-eight of nineteen. So there is a motion, did you make the motion, Mr. Kammer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion made by Trey Kammer, was it seconded by Elsie Carter. It's open for discussion on the table. The motion before the council. No further, no further discussion? All those, all those in favor of the motion, let me know, we're saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Hazelton? Do you like to say anything, Mr. Hazelton?
Well, it's up to that amount.
Come up this way, please. We'd like to get it on, on the radio.
What we asked for was access to those funds in that escrow account that was established in two thousand when we purchased the golf course, and actually, we anticipated startup funds and potentially the early debt service payments and reserve for debt service payments, as well as improvements, and we haven't done anything on the sand traps, other than rake them and add sand to them over the last eighteen years. And that is a weak point on the course right now, so that's why we asked for it. The request is up to that amount. And you'll have two additional deposits in that account, one this December and another one next December, for ten thousand dollars from ODA for the green space issues, that, again, the golf course, the back nine, serves for that purpose. So it's not like we're taking money out of the city funds. This is money that's been escrowed for the golf course from the get-go. We got a nice donation for the first several years of debt service and interest from the Wilburn Foundation, so we didn't have to use it. And so it's been used intermittently for debt service, and I don't believe any other improvement. So that's, that's the reason we're asking for it, and this is going to be a multi-year project. Some of these sand traps will eliminate, some of them will improve, and some of them will restructure, depending on where they are and how they impact the, the course. Mayor Black, at my invitation, did take a tour of the golf course the other day, so his observations are based on his experience on a very cold and windy day, from what you told me.
Yes, I'm sending you bill for four frost-bitten fingers, because it's so cold when I travel looking at these sand pits.
And I would like to say, just in the spirit of the moment, that had you gone the day before, it would have been sixty-eight degrees out there. So you just chose the wrong day?
I was too, I was too busy playing golf at the golf course. I wasn't looking at sand traps.
So I appreciate this, and I know the golf course board appreciates your support. They're all volunteers. We have a, I think, a considerable asset for the city out there. If you looked at your last audit report, your equity position on that course is something like nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we're going to continue to improve it, and hopefully, at the mayor's suggestion, have an event out there for the entire city this spring or summer, and look forward to seeing you all out there, anytime you can come. It is a beautiful area, lots of wildlife. I encourage you to come out to the clubhouse, check out a cart, run the course, anytime you feel like you're in the spirit, you might want to invite Judge Black to go with you on a nicer day.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor Black.
Honestly, for those who've not gotten a cart to travel the course, please go do it on a decent day. It's a very beautiful course, it's a great asset to our city. We just made, next to the last payment, just a few days ago, on the, was it the back nine or the front nine?
Front nine.
Front nine. We got one more payment left on the front nine of a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that will be paid off totally. So we're making progress, and that is a huge asset that a lot of cities, probably our size, do not have, but it's really a tremendous place out there, and we want to make it better even. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hazelton. Let's move on to item ten. This is time for public comment. Anyone here wishing to come before the council tonight and talk to us about any particular issue? You're always welcome to come. We'll give you at least four minutes to state what you want to talk about, and then if, in fact, you need to have more time allotted, then the council will make approval to extend your time. So is anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council? Yes, yes, ma'am. Please come forward. All the scouts, I'd like all the scouts to come forward, if they could, if, if they're all with you. Are they all with you?
Five of them are with me.
Well, okay.
I'm not sure, we've got an older scout here, he's welcome to come up with this.
And, well, I want him to be seen and recognized, so, well, he can come on his own in a minute if he wishes to. So yes, go right ahead and speak, and tell us, tell us who you are and what you're going on.
My name is Amy Hillebrand. I am the den leader for our Arrow White Den with PAC Two Hundred that meets at LaGrange Presbyterian Church. A couple weekends, weeks ago, Mr. Lamline came and spoke to our den as part of one of our requirements, and one of the topics that we spoke about was the green space where the skate park is and the advancements that we're trying to make in that, and they were all extremely interested in that and wanted to give their opinion as children that would actually be using the park, what they would like to see in that area.
I'm not going first.
No, Victor had a lot.
Who had, who had, who had an idea that they wanted us to try to do in the park?
What? I don't remember. It was like a week, two weeks ago.
They wanted it to be extremely kid-oriented, where it's something fun in the county that they can go to on a weeknight or during the weekend, stay out of trouble, have something fun that they can take their friends to. They were talking about, I'm not really sure what exactly the, you all are planning on the park having, or the area having, but they definitely wanted it to be youth-oriented. Well, they're, they're doing a water park, they're doing the splash park, so that's going to be coming, but they wanted some kind of an activity, because there's not a bowling alley anymore, that kind of thing, that's local, that they can go to without having to have a parent take them somewhere and have it to be an affair kind of thing, that they want something that's local, that they can just on the spur of the moment say, "Hey, let's go, go, go here," instead of, and that does not cost a lot of money. That's, that's another thing, because with families of large, you know, our families that are, that have a lot of kids or have a lot of activities, also thinking about our LaGrange residents, something that would be low-cost, family-friendly would be definitely something that these boys are interested in doing.
Well, we're certainly going to try to do that, and we've got a lot of different folks working on those different committees to, to listen to people like yourself and listen to these young, young men here, and they might could do some projects in the park eventually. I don't know if you all build bridges.
We are, we do. They are actually getting ready to cross over into troop one fifty-three, which is right over there at the Covenant Methodist Church.
Yes, ma'am.
So in a few years, they'll be working on their Eagle project, so maybe, maybe by the time they're working on their Eagle projects, you all will be ready for them to, to do some improvements to it, so...
Okay, if you could, why don't you just, one at a time, step up the podium, state your name, and so everyone in the whole county can see you on TV tonight. Go ahead. What's your name, young man?
My name is Tyler Hillebrand.
Tyler Hillebrand, okay, who's next?
My name's James Denny.
Okay, speak over, speak really loud, right in the center. What's your name, sir?
My name's James Denny.
Good to see you, okay. Yes, sir.
My name is Hayden King.
My name is Alex Gadberry.
My name is Victor Womack, and I want to know why there's four auto parts stores.
Victor Womack wants to know why there's four auto parts stores in LaGrange.
Yeah, they're right next to each other.
They really enjoyed meeting with Mr. Lamline. They had a really great meeting with him, and were asking lots of questions, and were very interested in that, and that's why we came tonight to let them see what it is and give them...
Well, Mr. Lamline came to see you, and council, councilwoman, woman Andrea and myself went to see another scout group at the firehouse a few nights ago, and we probably talked about the same thing you all did. Go ahead, go ahead, Andrea.
I will say, the kids in that troop, they wear WeBlows, also going for their Arrow of Light, and they were also extremely excited about the green space. They're, everyone's just lit up at that. There may, they had a lot of questions for Mayor Black. They asked me if the bakery was still going to be open, so I said I could do both, but thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Now, they ask her if she's getting out of the bakery business now that she's a city councilman.
Oh, we can't have that. No, we can't have that.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Okay. Okay, that was actually done during public comment. Does anyone else here tonight would like to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Kara Sanders with the Hope Health Clinic in LaGrange. I've seen many of you before, I'm the development coordinator for the clinic, and we're just are trying to get out more in the community and tell our leaders in the community what we are doing at the Hope Health Clinic, and how we, you guys can get involved, and how, to see how we can help your constituents that you all serve. So just a little facts about the Hope Health Clinic. We are your hometown clinic, we are your clinic, that we are, we are funded by local citizens, local corporations, by local donors. So no government funds, grants, open our doors down at the clinic, and we are treating your neighbors, your friends, your fast food workers, your daycare workers, we are all providing medical treatment for them. We see people who lack access to medical care, well, whether it's someone who does not have any insurance, someone who cannot, has insurance but cannot afford their deductible. We are simply finding that we are seeing more and more people that can't get to their doctor. They have insurance, they call, they can't see, see them for months, and we are taking them at the clinic for fifteen dollars. And we're also seeing a lot of children. We are currently working with the Oldham County School System and working with them and their resource coordinators to make sure no child is going untreated, and that we can see them at the clinic as well. In two thousand and eighteen, we had over four thousand patients from Oldham County, so that's a lot of patients. We had four hundred and ninety-four patients, new patients. We've been open for seven years, and we've provided over twenty-eight thousand patients with medical care that could not get it if we were not available to them. The national level of poverty is fourteen percent. While Oldham County may be the healthiest and wealthiest, we hear that all the time, we still are, have six percent living under the poverty level. And that, and in just Oldham County, that's thirty-nine hundred people, and in LaGrange alone, there's fourteen point five people living under the poverty level. So we are here to treat those people in Oldham County, people that don't have insurance, the working poor, and people who are not eligible for Medicaid, and we're finding a lot of people just fall into that gap, and we are making sure that they're getting the health care that they need and deserve. We appreciate you all and what you do for our community. We certainly hope that you will spread the word about the clinic. If you find someone that cannot get to the doctor, we are there to help, and we'd love for you to come visit us. If you have not had a tour of the clinic, come by, take the bus, it comes by the clinic. We, every day, someone's riding the bus, so it's a, so we appreciate their service as well. So come by and visit us at the clinic, and we have opened a new point of care lab, and we can now do labs the same day as their appointments. So we are working very hard to keep people at work, at school, and families healthy together, so we're working really hard at that. We hope that you will join us this Friday night, we're having one of our first fundraisers of the year. We are doing the Battle of the Bowls, Oldham County Battle of the Bowls. It's a big chili cook-off at the John Black Community Center, so we hope you will join us, come eat dinner with us. It's five dollars, all you can eat chili, you will have so much chili, you won't know what to do with. Desserts, hot dog, drink, all for five dollars, and all the money goes to the Hope Health Clinic. And we would love to have you come out to our 5K, we are hosting that on June the ninth, and then our Rockin' for Hope Gala, which always takes place on the second August, second Friday in August, on June, August the ninth. So please come support us, and we will really appreciate your time and your effort to spread, to help us spread the word. All right, I brought some flyers, if you all want to post these around, we'd love to have you guys send some information about the clinic. Any questions?
Where's your, where's your gala going to be this year?
City Place again, and I'll give you a little, haven't put this out there yet, we, it's going to be a Beatles theme this year.
Beatles theme.
So yes, it's going to be a lot of fun, so we're super excited about that.
Okay, so you have your big chili supper this Friday night, right?
Friday night, come join us, yes.
And hopefully, the public will show up and support a good cause, being the Hope Health Clinic.
Yes, we have about thirty-two local organizations, churches, businesses, restaurants, individuals bringing chili. So, so it's a pretty big event. Last year, we had about two hundred people, so we'd love for you all to come join us.
Well, I like chili.
Oh, come, come, join us.
I'll try to get there and eat some.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you coming to see us. Yes, ma'am. Come right, come right up, and please give us your name and address, if you would, please.
Tracy, six oh four Lakeview Drive, and I didn't know if I could say this when the bus was talking or not, but they do try to work with you if you have a schedule. My one day, Debbie usually takes me to Dr. Kemp's, but she had a doctor's appointment too, and they work with me, I didn't have to cancel my appointment.
Is that right?
So I just thought I'd put that out there, that might help the people, too.
Sure, sure. Thank you for that information, Tracy. Anyone else like to speak? I'll tell you what, I'm going to take this opportunity during public comment to make a comment. I've evidently misspoke a few weeks ago when the discussion was taking place about the three oh nine West Main Street property. The Oldham era concluded that we didn't do it properly, we can, I conducted the meeting wrongfully, and they asked for an apology, and I'd like to grant an apology to you all for anything that I did wrongfully. I tried to do what I felt was to be done, to make an acquisition for the city, but maybe, I guess I perhaps used the wrong wording, not sure exactly what I did wrong, because I don't try to do anything wrong. Never have. because I don't try to do anything wrong. Never have and never will. But you asked for apology, and I'm giving it to you publicly. Um, I'll try not to do wrong again. That's all I can say.
I'd like to interject there, but I don't care.
There are next items, LaGrange Main Street report.
Uh, let me interject just a moment, please. I just would like to say, uh, Mr. Black, I've been on council for a long time, and I do know the rules and the regulations, and you did nothing wrong that night. It was perceived that you did, but you did nothing wrong. There was no vote taken. There was not a consensus asked for. It was just merely the information was put out there for everybody to know because you wanted to know ahead of time. So I have to stand up and defend you, even though you're apologizing, which it takes a big man to do that. So thank you for doing that.
Okay, LaGrange Main Street report. Good evening.
How are you? Um, I will give you reports you can take with you. Um, I, you have the reports, so you'll be able to look over that, but some highlights that did not make it to the report. Um, I just found out as I was sitting down that for the green space, which we now call the LaGrange Springs Park Committee, um, we have been, we applied, uh, for a hundred thousand dollars for the grant that is actually sponsored by Gannett and USA Today, and we have made it to the next round. What that's going to entail is a crowdfunding. So please be watching for the social media because we will need to raise three thousand dollars to be able to move to the next level. And the three thousand dollars, we get to keep, so it's not going to go anywhere. It just helps us make it to the next level. So make sure and watch social media for that. Another contest that we're going to be in online is the Independent We Stand, America's Main Street. Please watch that because that's going to be an opportunity for Main Street to win twenty-five thousand dollars, which that money would be used towards, um, sort, towards our projects, probably the facade grants and the roof abatement. Let's see. I wanted to thank, if you have not had a chance to see, the Oldham era, they shared a story about the Girl Scouts that were out in the cold selling cookies, and they sell, they, um, shared the story of the gentleman that bought three hundred dollars worth of cookies and took them to the local nursing home. So, thank you all very much for sharing that. It goes to show that we have kind people still. We take care of our own in the community. Um, March is kind of a quiet month. We have Celebration of Women on March 28th. That is a, um, chamber event, and this year, they're going to, they always honor women, but it's women that have served. Um, that's not going to be on, in your packet. Um, they're, they serve women who have served in the military are going to be the ones that they honor. So if you have an opportunity to attend that, that would be great. Watch, April's going to be very busy, so watch out for that. Um, also publicly, I will, um, make the announcements for those that have not seen. I have stepped down as the director for the Main Street program. Um, but, so if anybody is interested, it's a wonderful position. I would encourage you to apply, send a resume to director@lagreangmainstreet.org. We'll be looking for that. I'm staying involved. Um, this board has asked me and agreed to have me sit on the board, so I'm not going anywhere. You're not getting rid of me. So, um, but we just have someone else that will be taking, being the face. Friday, March 8th, this Friday, the Springs Committee will be having another meeting at eight fifth, at eight-thirty at, at 208 East Main at the office. So please, if you have an interest, join us for that.
This Friday.
That's this Friday. Hmm, and young men left, but I was just very appreciative that they were interested. The meeting on Saturday, for those that were not able to attend, was amazing, the public forum. We had a lot of people there, all very positive. I have given Becca four copies of each of the plans to stay at the City Hall, so if people want to stop by and look at the plans, to please be able to look at those, we will have those on the, on Facebook also. There is a, um, Facebook page for the Springs project, so make sure and to look at that. Let's see, a lot of information. Did I, any questions?
Any questions for Karen or comments?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, uh, as a business owner, that the chocolate crawl this year was the best it's ever been. It's been, it was fantastic for us. Um, we got nothing but positive feedback, and, uh, and I really appreciate your work on that, and, uh, the extra media that we got, uh, around the chocolate crawl was great. So thank you so much. I'm so glad you're staying involved, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, I forgot to say that we had five, we sold all 500 tickets. We had 470 actually show, and, um, just for the public, we have, we incentivize people to make purchases, and so we had 870 tickets turned back in, so that is a great.
Karen, how, how long have you been director now?
Uh, director for three years. It'll be four years in two.
For three, yeah. I was trying to think today. Well, I'd like to publicly thank you for your directorship and working 60-hour weeks and only getting paid for 20. And would you please tell us where you're going?
Oh, okay, yes. Um, maybe I'll get extra bonus there. I'm going to be with Bedford Bank as a loan officer, so I'll be here in LaGrange, so.
I'd like also to say that just your former tenure was not all you've done. In 1990, when the merchants started trying to meet, you had the old church place, and you conducted the meetings, and you got them all together, and you got on the road. And that was the best time you had was in the 90s there, so we're going to miss you on the road.
Oh, no, still be around.
Try somebody, try somebody else.
We are, we are.
But they won't be as good as yours.
Uh, they'll be better.
They'll.
Yes, it's making room for better things to happen. That's what we do, the next step up. Anything else?
Karen, I'd like to thank you, too, for your leadership in downtown, and I know you love this city, and it shows, Bill said, 60 hours a week for 22 hours' worth of pay, and, uh, but you, you've been up here at all hours of the day and night trying to promote our city. Um, I remember going into your bookstore years ago and taking my little granddaughter because I was unemployed, I guess, so I was her babysitter, and I would pull her in there in a little carriage, and, and she'd wet in her pants. I'd have to go do that, you know, take care of that, but I had such a great time with Holly, the little girl, when I was coming to your bookstore, and we were having those meetings there that, that Elsie was talking about, and, but, um, once again, thank you for your service. Appreciate you staying involved and helping out whomever has chosen to take your position, and I just hope they have enough, as much firepower and enthusiastic ways of going about as you did.
Yeah, probably better. Thank you. Well, you're welcome. Thank you. And I think that's what is wonderful about LaGrange. It's about the relationships, so keep up the good work. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we have a LaGrange Utilities report. Um, Mr. Chisholm's not here tonight, and you have the report in front of you. If, um, anyone has any questions about the report before you, um, we do have LaGrange Utility Representatives here, and they'd be more than glad to try to help you, uh, anything you might want to ask. Uh, Ms. Carter, I know you've been to a meeting or two of their, of theirs. Do you have anything to add about the Utility Commission at this point?
No, the meetings were enjoyable. I learned a lot that I didn't know, but they were reporting this next meeting on things they're having now as soon as they're, they gel.
Okay. I think the interceptor pipe that's going across the interstate, I've seen, I have seen a lot of signs going up there on that southbound ramp. I guess that's just going to be notifying the public that you're all going to make any, I guess, uh, highway crossing there at, under I-71? Come up and tell us about that, please.
Sure, please.
That's a pretty major project that the Utility Commission is in.
Yeah, for those that don't know, my, my name's Jonathan Bates, and I'm the assistant director with the utility company. Um, but yeah, what they're planning on doing is they're going to actually be, um, building a, a pull-off ramp on the side there where people, they can actually pull off and take off equipment, that kind of stuff. Uh, here in the next month or so, they'll probably be starting to do some clearing, taking out trees and that kind of stuff, because what's actually happening is we're going to be running a new sewer line across underneath the interstate. We have a casing pipe that's already there, so they'll be pulling a new line through there and then running a line parallel beside the lines there now.
So you're adding an actual, um, is that a force main going to the sewer plant? Is that gravity fed?
It's, it's gravity fed to the south pump station, which is over on New Moody Lane, and they, uh, it's, we're just actually upsizing the line.
But will you just have one line when it's all said and done, or you still have parallel lines?
They'll be two in the ground, but they'll just be one active.
Okay, and that's what you're putting in new?
Yes, sir.
How big is that?
It's, uh, 24, right, Roy?
24 inches?
24 inches, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I know it's been a task trying to get the federal highways to allow you to go down the median inside the two north-southbound lanes, but you've got that accomplished and, and understand, I think it saved the customer a lot of money by finally getting the federal highways to approve that, correct?
It did, because it, what happened is there, there was pretty much two, uh, two plans, and one was going to cost the customers a lot more because it was going to take a whole lot more money to spend on it, so we was actually able to go with the cheaper route, which is better for everybody.
Okay, no further questions for Jonathan. Thank you so much for standing in for Tia. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item 13 is, uh, interlocal agreement for management control of Oldham County Central Dispatch. Uh, we have Chief Colette here tonight. Chief, come forward, and if the court, if the council doesn't understand exactly what this interlocal agreement's about, you can, uh, tell them everything that you, they need to know.
Yes, sir. The interlocal agreement is placed before you. Due to the administration change with the mayor, it's necessary to update the authority signature on this for us to maintain our interlocal agreement, of course, with Oldham County Central Dispatch, uh, and the Lincoln CIC systems, which are the important systems that give us all the vehicle registration information, want warrants on persons, individuals, stolen property. It's dictated that we enter an interlocal agreement with our dispatch center, which most of you know as Oldham County Central Dispatch, which dispatches for all law enforcement and emergency services in the county. Um, when we sign off on this, we're agreeing that we're going to participate in the Oldham County Central Dispatch Operations Board, which essentially selects designees of the chief supervisor from, um, all the agencies to sit on the board, and that board dictates the policy and controls and the security that's used for those systems. It has to, have to, has to be maintained under the direction of the Director of Dispatch and, and the input of the board. So essentially, we need the mayor's signature to continue that agreement, so we have our systems up and running.
Who's all partnership, who's all partners in this agreement besides us?
It would be all your law enforcement heads, chief from the county police, chief from city police, chief Beebe Valley Police, uh, chief, or a chief or deputy, head deputy chief of the sheriff's office. Then you have the fire departments that are, have representatives as well, along with EMS. And I believe a magistrate from fiscal court's also on that board.
You all meet like monthly?
I believe it's monthly.
Okay, uh, council, you've had this in your packet. Is there approval to approve myself signing this interlocal agreement, uh, that the chief has asked us to sign for the operation of the central dispatch system as it has been done in the past?
Correct.
Does that have to be in a form of motion?
I'd like to get it approved by the motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we let John sign this interlocal agreement for the Commonwealth of Oldham County.
I'll second that.
A motion made by Debbie, second by Andrea. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
That you, that you make, just do this by a resolution. Just pick a resolution that approves, authorizes him to sign this. This is a pretty important document, so I think it'd be.
Okay, we're going to adopt it by resolution.
Yeah.
Debbie.
We will adopt it by resolution.
Second by De, uh, Andrea. Any further discussion on the motion before the council? If not, although it's unfair, the motion, let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Would you like to say anything else to the council tonight?
Well, hopefully if things continue on track by the next, uh, council meeting, I hope to have the annual report from last year, which will have our run statistics, collision information, and the different activities of the officers ready and ready to present to you. I'd like to express my appreciation to Corey Rusnick and his personnel from, and you directing them to come there. We've had some building maintenance issues, some significant leak, leaks running from the roof and damage to some tiles, so they've been on top of it trying to help us out, and it looks like we're in for some repairs, and they've taken care of some other maintenance issues. As far as any other current events, we're reviewing the fleet, see the status of maintenance levels on the cars since it was mentioned, try to figure out where we can address some issues and what the remedies may be, so we'll have a report on that prepared for you as well.
Your two Durango's look very nice on the street.
Yes, sir. Can't take credit for it.
Huh?
Can't take credit for it. They were in progress for got there, but they, they definitely look good, and they, the cars that they replaced were definitely due.
To be replaced?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chief, I want to thank you for, uh, taking your time out for the meet and greet at police station Thursday night. I thought it was a great turnout, and, and, uh, I appreciate your presentation, giving us all your background and, and all you're involved in, and so thank you very much, chief.
I was happy to do it, and I appreciate Citizens Academy putting that on. That was nice.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate you coming tonight, but.
No problem.
Um, can I say something to, I started calling Kevin.
I answer to both anymore.
I would just like to apologize for not being at the meet and greet, but I didn't know anything about it, and I just found out that Bill didn't, so the whole council was not informed.
We were told it was just for the, uh, academy people.
And I'll be honest, that's partly on me. The Citizens, uh, Academy and their Alumni Association approached me, and I assumed they were putting it out there, and of course, I've been running around, and I just, I, to me, it was their event, and I assumed they were doing.
That's okay. I just wanted you to know it wasn't that we didn't care about the police department.
I know you all do. Every, every one of you expressed how much you care and how, how supportive you've been for me and the guys on the department.
Yes.
And I know it. They work different shifts, and you all may not see them, but they, they know it, and everyone appreciates it.
We'll make a point to, uh, get Kathleen to, I guess Kathleen is, Kathleen in charge of the alumni, or?
She holds a post in there. This was, that was part of her idea, and she put a lot of that together. And I think she's going to be the information point for the alumni.
I think so, too.
And I'm, we're going to try to help them out and get some things streamlined.
I'll get with Kathleen and make sure that it's all, I mean, I, it was on social medias where I've run into it at, but, you know.
Like I said, it might have been partly on me. I just worked on the assumption they were putting the word out.
Well, they should have, yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure everybody's notified. Okay, Andrea would like to say something?
I was just, are you all going to be running a, a Citizens Academy this summer? Are you going to continue that?
Yes, it's, we've already been asked. I think there's a pretty good interest for it, and working Sergeant Whitehill's schedule and how coverage is going to be, and see what the right time period for it to run, but yes, the intent is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, item 14, council, um, council, General Counsel Beech Craigmaw, I'm going to give him the opportunity to speak. Um, we were to have a public hearing tonight on ordinance 1-219, but this alley closure has been a tough one to get completed, in my, in my honest opinion. Um, I think unbeknownst to Beech, through the process and, and through some surveying issues and your asked questions, I think Beech, um, tonight would like to speak to the council as to not having a public hearing and a second reading, but trying to readdress the whole, uh, issue in one new, um, first reading in its entirety, including, uh, property that's sort of been laying there behind the LaGrange Utility Commission, backing up to the apartment complex, the alley itself on a description, and I think the appropriate way to go is try to just not have a vote at all on the public hearing on the second reading, and go ahead and introduce tonight a first reading that explains it in its entirety. So, Mr. Craigmaw, would you like to speak in this microphone and tell the folks what you would like to tell them from a general counsel's viewpoint?
Uh, your first.
Oh, your first mistake is giving a lawyer an opportunity to talk, so that's unforgivable.
Well, you need, the folks need to know that you're a lawyer and you can explain this the way it needs to be explained, sir.
Well, I'll do the best I can. You know, everybody's known about the Sumac Alley situation.
Speaking to them, sir.
For a long time, and so when I stepped into this role, there was just a little bit of a confusion in the transition and the maps that I saw in, files that I saw first, it was just gonna go about 100, 200 feet up Sumac Alley and then stop. But then the more we dug into the file, the more we found that the neighbors had actually been contacted about closing Sumac Alley all the way up to Madison Avenue. And so we then asked the surveyor to redraw the plans all the way up to Sumac Alley and then calculate the division of the road in half so that there's, you know, when you close a road, the property is divided equally between the two owners. And so the surveyor has done that now and that's part of what's attached. So the rather than legally, rather than, we could just, whoever introduced this, whichever council member introduced this, we could withdraw it, or we could just let it die on the vine and then start with a new one, which is what we're doing tonight. And so this is, I'll read it, let me ask y'all, do you all prefer to have ordinances read out loud, word for word, or would you just wanna read them in summary?
Summarize, 'cause it's legal.
Okay.
That's what I prefer to do. So this is City of LaGrange.
I think, Mr. Craig-Mile, before we move there, please, please advise the council, if anything needs to be done, on the fact that we have on the table tonight to have a public hearing and a second reading and a, for a public hearing, do we, as you said, is it okay, in your opinion, just let it die on the vine and it's never been heard for the second time and now we're moving on to a first reading for a proposed new defined ordinance?
Well, there's, there's no wrong by having too many public hearings. I mean, we're here tonight, the public is here, and we're having a hearing, but we're just, I would recommend that someone make a motion to amend the agenda to address a first reading of the new ordinance, which is 002, and then we'll have another public hearing next week.
I mean, next month.
Next month, as to where anyone could come. Do you think that covers it?
So tonight, we're having a first reading of a new ordinance stating exactly what needs to be done, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
But I think someone should, to procedurally correct the, the agenda, we could amend the agenda, make a motion to amend the agenda to have a first reading of the Sumac Alley closing.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
Mayor, I'll make that motion, that we had, that we amend number 14 of the agenda to make that, to change the word from second to first reading.
Correct. And if this had been just, you know, maybe just like 10 feet difference, we could have done this by an amendment, because there's nothing that says the first reading has to be identical to the second reading. You can make all sorts of minor corrections in between, so.
Before I get there, okay, there's a motion on the table by Councilman Lamline.
We also need to change the ordinance number 2-2019.
I think procedurally, you could just close out number 14 and then introduce this new ordinance in unfinished business, which I think now is the new 18 from when we amended the agenda before.
Me? I don't care whether you move it down, I mean, that means I gotta be quiet for 15 minutes until you get down there.
Okay, we're just gonna, okay, we have a motion, I think, I felt, to remove item 14 and in place of it, have a first reading on our ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, the motion's been made by Councilman Lamline, is her second? Second by Councilwoman Carter, it's open for discussion. Anyone like to discuss the motion on the table?
What's the motion, Mayor? What are we doing?
We're, we're removing the second reading of ordinance 1-219 and replacing it with a first reading of ordinance, what's our new ordinance number?
Okay.
Two.
Two, 219. All right, thank you.
That's what we're doing. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
What do we do with the first reading we had? Will we correct the minutes on that next month on correction of the minutes, since the first reading's in the minutes of February the 4th?
Well, I don't think we can correct them.
Or do, or what do you do?
It's what happened, but we just.
We'll just amend those minutes for?
Well, we just won't have a second reading of the, of the act. It's just gonna die on the vine, just like in Congress, if Bill doesn't make it through committee, it's, it's not gonna make it through here. It will just be, we'll just make another, another ordinance and then we'll, and somebody could make a motion, I suppose, to withdraw this, this, this 2019-01.
Well, I feel like something needs to be done to it, since it's in the minutes, the minutes will have to be.
But it would not be a second reading, would not be performed, so therefore that is, you don't really have to do anything, it would be there. And then he substituted it for a first reading.
Right.
And I'd like to say that I did not almost approve of this until I heard that all the neighbors were in favor of it and he consensus the fact that this is what they wanted, so.
So the first reading that we had February the 4th, it just died, since it was, since it was introduced and.
You leave February 4th minutes alone.
Yeah.
Because that's what actually happened.
We're just trying to get through this, we're not gonna have a second reading, and we have a motion, I understand it to be, that we will, we will not have the second, and we'll put this in the minutes, so it will be reflective of this meeting, we will not have a second reading of ordinance dash 1-219, but in place of that, we will introduce tonight a first reading of a revised ordinance. Is that okay? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to that effect, correct? Okay, is there further discussion on that? So everyone understand it? All those in favor of the motion, let me know, saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I do.
Okay. I have one opposition. So at this time, Mr. Craig-Mile, can we have a first reading on that ordinance?
Correct. City of LaGrange, Kentucky, ordinance number 002, series 2019, is an ordinance related to the closing of a portion of Sumac Alley pursuant to KRS 82.405. And as part of the reading and summary, you're supposed to give a reasonable description of the property that's being closed, and so this is the Sumac Alley where it comes off of East Jefferson Street to East Madison Street approximately 431 feet in length. And there's an unimproved alley at the rear of the property at 412 East Jefferson Utilities Commission that is not to be used anymore, and so that's officially being closed. So what this ordinance would do would be close this alley with all the neighbors having been, with any property adjoining it, having been contacted, having gotten, having given their advice of the plan, having given their written notarized consent to the closing of the property, and there having been attached heretofore a plat prepared by a professional licensed surveyor and professional engineer, as well as the meets and bounds legal description of the entire property to be closed and removed from the city road system. So that's the motion, or that's the ordinance, that replaces the formerly presented, now abandoned, ordinance number one, which was incomplete.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Craig-Mile. You've stated that we'll consider this a first reading and we'll have a public hearing on that ordinance on April 1st, which is April Fool's Day. So we'll be here. Thank you very much, Mr. Craig-Mile.
Certainly.
Okay, 15 is committee discussion. What I meant for this to entail this item here was, I did talk and converse with some committees this week to try to set up some meetings, to be advertised, when they will be held, and I would like for any of those committees to publicly announce tonight when you will have your first meeting, if you have one planned. Does anyone have one planned? You don't? Okay. I need for roads, public safety, police, environmental stormwater, Joe Davenport, Andrea and Debbie to get a meeting advertised, 'cause we need to have a meeting. Could y'all do that, please?
I think Joe, I think we determined what a date would be.
We only determined when we were gonna meet. We agreed on, we agreed on meeting the second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday of the month?
That's, yes, you asking a letter that you sent out, Mayor, for the chairs to contact you and tell you when we're having standing meetings, right? That we, instead of sitting up here in the city council discussing what the next minute was gonna be?
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that, but the second Wednesday of the month's not till after April, you know, second week in April, correct?
That'd be correct, I guess.
Okay. I would like, I would like for this.
Second week, second Wednesday of the month be, the fourth will be, this is only the 3rd, this is Monday, 4th, I mean.
Okay, can you get a, can you meet, get a meeting scheduled for the second week of March for me?
It'd be the 13th.
Get it advertised.
I was already looking at April.
Can you do it?
I don't know why not.
Okay. Could you decide on it tonight, when it's gonna be, so the public will know it? If not, we need to notify the paper and get it advertised, because I've got an issue that I need to get into this committee. Can you do that for me?
Sure.
Okay.
The second Wednesday will be the 13th.
Okay, can you, what time we gonna have a meeting?
We didn't discuss the time.
What time would you like to have a meeting?
What time's available for, it's only Andrea and Debbie and myself.
I'm not available that Wednesday, but you all can meet as a quorum of two, correct? Or I can meet at like 4 o'clock that day.
Y'all meet 4 o'clock?
I can meet at 4.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay?
That'd be great.
Where would you like to meet? Where you gonna meet? City Hall?
City Hall.
At the upstairs in the meeting room?
That's fine.
Okay.
13th at 4 o'clock, City Hall.
It's a road, public safety, police, environmental stormwater committee, okay? So that's set. Trey, I think you were in on email to try to get some meetings going, would you, when would you like to have a budget buildings finance committee meeting? I'd like to get one of those scheduled to start discussing our budgeting.
That is LC, Bill and myself. Does Wednesday, March 20th work at 5 o'clock?
Does that work for you all?
Does that work for you guys? Okay. Wednesday, March 20th at 5 o'clock at City Hall.
Okay, we have one more committee that needs to get scheduled to meet, it's Personnel, Insurance Boards, Commissions, including Code Enforcement. It's Trey Kammer, Joe Davenport and Debbie Pollard. Trey Kammer, at this point, is chair.
Do you wanna go for the trifecta on Wednesdays? How about Wednesday, the 27th?
Sounds good. As long as you, you talking about the same day?
Um, 3/27.
Yeah, that's fine.
Does 5, 5 o'clock work again? At the same place? Okay.
Okay, just as long as those meetings are advertised and the public made aware and they're posted and everyone's notified, that's when those three meetings will be held, okay? For any one of you all that are involved. Any further discussion on a committee assignment or anything at this point?
Yes, John, I am trying to get an appointment with the Chamber of Commerce for the Economic Development, our Southeast and West Committee, so I'm just, I'm waiting for them to give me a time when we can do that.
Appreciate that, Mayor. That'd be, that'd be a committee I'd like to see get moving as well, and just to see perhaps what are the economic interest of what you, what your assignment is, and I've got some thoughts myself, so whenever you want to say that committee's to meet, then we'll be waiting for your decision.
Thank you.
Standing committee reports tonight, item 16, this is the one that the LaGrange Historic District Guidelines Committee went to at 309 West Main to provide to the city council anything in their viewpoint needed to be done, whether it's appropriation of money, whether it's just standard upkeep, so at this point, who would like to report on that committee?
John, I just need to make comment, that's dated wrong, it should have been 219, 2019, not 319, so that hasn't happened yet.
You talking about your report?
Yes.
Okay. Who's gonna give that report?
I think, I think everybody was handed out to them.
Yeah, but I'd like for the, the public to understand what, what's in the report and what, what we need to be doing.
Okay, would the chair like to do that, or?
Sure, I was not there that day, unfortunately.
That's all right, you can read, I know you can.
I will read it. Okay. So this was at 309 West Main Street, and so the Bill and Andrea both walked around with some of the other attendants, Mayor Black, Stephanie from Code Enforcement and Corey from Public Works, and also the Oldham Arrow was there, and council members Carter, Pollard and Davenport were all in attendance, and they basically looked around for extra issues that would be detrimental to the structural integrity and historical integrity of the building. They talked about the general condition of the structure and things that could be a liability to the city. Recommendations are as followed, they want to remove existing wood deck at the west side of home and secure the side door. They want to patch the hole in roof where a roof ventilator was missing. The roof itself is in fairly good condition and shows no signs of leaking from inside the building. They would like to clean and re固定the gutters to the fascia gutter boards and also replace downspouts as needed. They would like to check the chimney flashings and repair as needed. Close up all cellar and crawl space openings to prevent entry. Remove existing wooden shed on the west side rear of the property. The shed is not listed on the National Registry. They would like to remove two abandoned automobiles and trampoline. Remove all tree branches and limbs as practical, which hang over the building. The thoughts of the committee, it was the general consensus of the committee that the original building, built in the late 1870s, was in good structural condition from the visual inspection. They did not receive, they did not remove any exterior or interior covering to make a more informed inspection. The addition to the building was probably added in the early 1900s and is not in good condition. This opinion was made without removing any exterior or interior covering. They adjourned at 6:10 PM.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bolton. I guess the council's had a chance to look at, look at that report. Is there any discussion on the report that any council would like to mention or bring to the attention of the full council or even the public? Yes, ma'am.
I was there, I attended the meeting. I will just say on the record, I am not a building inspector. I, I don't have any real experience in looking. I, I don't have any real experience in looking at buildings and determining what needs to be done. I do have eyes and I have common sense, so I could kind of see what might be a liability for the city, and I gave that input. And Councilman Lambline gave his very experienced opinion on preservationists. So that's what I have.
Okay. Any of these things described in the report, committee members, does, did do any of this work? Does any of that need to be forwarded and permitted through the LaGrange Historic District Commission?
No.
Okay. So all that work can be done either by our own forces, we believe? Okay?
Can I make a suggestion?
Turn your mic on.
All right. Well, I think a sign should be, a keep off sign should be put up until such time, because there's some dangerous old rusty cars back there, and it's an attractive nuisance if we don't get it, you know, fixed up pretty quick. So it ought to be worked on for, to avoid any liability.
Well, hopefully we'll get those vehicles out there very soon. Soon as we can get to them. It's got a nice Volkswagen over there, so we might keep that for some of our artwork throughout our town, or maybe in our park, but I'm sure there's some artistic persons that can make something out of that Volkswagen. So I really do appreciate your all's report. I think it's a good one, and we will forward this on to Cory Rusnick, and like he doesn't have anything else to do, and see how he can deal with some of these issues that we think need to be done. Anything further than that will probably be eventually brought forward to the full city council on that house or anything in that area as to what the council wishes to appropriate monies for, to do what with. So that will probably be forthcoming as we look towards our next year's budget as to what monies at all do we want to put in the house and/or the property involved with that. Okay. Thank you so much to that committee.
Oh, sorry, one more. We will be meeting a tad earlier for this month, and we're planning a meeting at six o'clock on the twelfth, which is the Tuesday, prior to the Historic Commission meeting, just so that we can cover a little bit more material than we were able to last month. But we are making some progress in reviewing with the Historic Commission and working on, next will be signs, and hopefully diving in and to the next section, and also looking at the appeal process.
Thank you so much, Mary Bolton. You and your committee are doing good things by trying to review the whole Historical District Commission ordinance, and hopefully you'll keep working at it, and we'll have something very worth, you know, it's not to say it's not worthwhile, but any change that you're all trying to correct, that will be good for the operation of the district. Okay. As the meeting started, I wanted to insert for an item sixteen B, I'll call it, I'd like to reappoint Keith Smith. I'm sure a lot of y'all know Keith Smith. He's on our Board of Adjustments and Appeals. His term actually expired the second day of this month. He's, was contacted today and does enjoy serving on that board, and I would like to make the appointment to retain Keith Smith for another four years, and his term would run through two thousand twenty-three to March the second of that month. So anyone like to entertain, make the motion to approve Keith Smith?
I'll make a mo, motion.
Who did? Andrea?
Yeah.
Okay. Andrea makes the motion to approve Keith Smith as reappointment to the board. Is there a second?
I would be glad to second that.
Second by Mayor Lambline. I have to call these folks mayors, because they're all mayors at one time or another. Everybody's going to think we got four mayors sitting up here if they watch this TV show. So, so it's been motion made and second. Any further discussion on appointment? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
And one opposed. In this same category, I'd like to also appoint tonight, not that I have to, but I'd want to make sure everybody's aware, and the Parks Board's aware too, and it's done by business of the council, I would like to add Trey Kammer to the Parks Committee. Trey's very involved with the parks. He loves the parks. He likes to be there, and, and I wanted to add him to that because of his involvement. Would anybody like to make the motion to approve Trey to be on part of the Parks Board?
I'll make a motion that we-
Parks Committee.
Approve Trey to be on the Parks Committee.
Okay. Debbie's made the motion to put him there. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Leslie Wright. Any discussion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you so much. We're still moving here. Okay. This is probably an item, our next item, is an item maybe this council has not seen before and under, maybe recognized it, but it comes under unfinished business. It's a pre-application for encroachment permit. I put in your packet, my, something I'm attempting to do, and basically what it is, is get Highway East one forty-six cleaned up, heading out of our town, past the Historical Russell District Courts, Woodland Lake Subdivision, and what it does, it involves the state highway right of way there, and also talking with CSX officials. I have met with the State of, State Highway Department engineer onsite and talked to him about if, in fact, we try to continue to clean up that right of way, if he would permit us to do that. And C.W. Seymour, who I've dealt with for years and from the State Highway Department, he said, sure, I would, John, be glad to help you any way I can, but I would prefer if you would fill out this permit for me. So if, in fact, anyone's in this right of way, you have the appropriate permit from the Department of Highways granting you that permission. Typically, when you go into state highway right of way, they, they will offer you this permit, they give you that permission, and then what that would allow myself to do, or ourselves, would be if, in fact, I can find some volunteer help, I can find some inmate detail out of Kentucky State Reformatory, if I need Cory to drop his bush hog to just knock down some of that brush on occasion, then we are permitted to do that. It's my goal to try to make that area and that right of way is just as nice as any right of way in the city of LaGrange, understanding that we do have a rail yard there. I'm going to be out of town for the rest of the week. I have an appointment with CSX Railroad Yard Superintendent that oversees those operations on Wednesday at two PM, but I've asked, I've asked our Code Enforcement Lady, Stephanie Winter. I've already emailed the person with CSX that I'm going to be unable to be there, but Stephanie's going to be there in my place, just trying to suggest to the railroad our efforts, understanding it's a rail yard, but our goal is to try to clean up the area as best we can. Someone, I don't know if it's Southern State or CSX, has recently taken down an old building up there that's been an eyesore for many years, but that was taken down probably a month ago, unbeknownst to me, but it's gone. There's logs, there's telephone poles, been laying in a ditch line for probably ten years. There's old electrical poles that are standing there that probably were hooked up twenty-five years ago, still there. But as you've seen what the state highway did above Chestnut Street, I would like to improve that area as well and keep working towards cleaning up that right of way. And I'm asking you tonight to consider this permit that Mr. Seymour asked me to fill out, to give us that ability, but at the same time, the city council's always aware that somebody could be in there working at, at my or our direction to try to improve the site distance, the, the view, the look across the street from these neighborhoods, being Woodland Lake Subdivision, the courts, which we call that, Maple, Chestnut, and what's the third one, Bill? Birch, and all that area through there. I just think they deserve a better passageway through their part of town, and that's what I'd like to get accomplished. So is there any discussion on what I'm asking the council to consider tonight?
I have a question, and I'll make a, a motion. How, do you know what the right of way, how, how wide that is through there, John? It probably varies.
There's a, there's a fence across the street, Mr. Lambline, in John Stewart's yard, and they said probably right about, back to that fence is the right of way, so take that same distance over there and bring it across the highway.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to move that we give you the authority to go ahead and sign this encroachment permit.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Lambline, second by Debbie Pollard. Any discussion on this?
Mayor, can I ask? I agree with what you presented here. Is there any way, just thinking about some of the other right of ways, that we could look at mainly the on and off ramp area, more the off ramp. It appears to be from seventy-one. I don't know if anybody in the springtime, like summertime, has traveled down the Gene Snyder, but I don't know what exit it is, but they have, they plant sunflowers, and it looks great when they're all in bloom. I feel like the, the on and off ramps, basically the entryway to our city from visitors and folks that live here, it, it doesn't look so attractive either. So I applaud what you're doing here, but maybe consider trying to do the same, same thing or something similar for that area, if possible.
I so much appreciate your suggestion, because I was afraid to put two of these ideas before you in the same night, because I was afraid I'd get beat on the first one. But that's another, that's another tough one there, but I know the federal highway people in Frankfurt who would give us that permit, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't believe it if we could actually help do what you're saying at the entrance to our city, Trey, and make it, make it so pristine and, and mow it more regularly and get it sharp looking. I appreciate what you've just said, and if you would permit me to go to the federal highways and see what we can do in their right of way, that's federal highways there, that's not state. But they do work close hand in hand, and I will do what we can, because I think that's what we'd all like to have, is have a pretty entrance to our city. And if we can do anything better out there with those fences that I've asked Stephanie to go take banners down off of, and, and shrubs growing up through fence lines, I'm all for that, if, if you, if you want me to pursue that.
I'd very much like that. I know, I'm sure next time you get off seventy-one northbound, there's a tower, or a pole there that's been there for forever. I don't remember the last time there's been anything on that pole. We tried to look into the ownership of it and just to try to make things look better and sharper. So there's all kinds of things that could be beautified there.
Well, if, if you, if you want me to try this, would you like to have welcome to LaGrange on top of those poles?
That, that was a suggestion as well.
Well, I can, I can go to work on that, too.
That sounds great.
But anything we can do to showcase our city, that's what we want to do, and I very much appreciate your suggestion there, but tonight, we're talking about Highway one forty-six. Cory and them, you know, there's areas in the city already that actually are state highway right of ways. There's grass line between the curb and the sidewalks. Well, they mow all that. That's actually state highway right of way, but we take care of it, because to me, if it makes our city look sharp to and from, in and out, then how can we not pay attention to it? So anyway, I've said enough. Did anyone, did anybody give me the approval to do that yet?
I did.
Okay. Bill Lambline, did anyone second his motion?
Debbie.
Debbie Pollard did. Any further discussion on that motion for me to go ahead and do out this, fill out this application for the state of Kentucky?
I have one question. So the permit type, is it, is it going to be limited to any of those items, like vegetation removal, or is it, or maybe other, I guess? So kind of looking right in the middle, where it's a little bit darker highlight, is the area I'm talking about?
It's, it's going to be, I guess, Trey, as, as need basis, I talked to him about some trees. I've got some, you know, I might donate some money to plant some trees up there myself. I don't know what I'll do, because I want it looking nice. Might, might try to put a black plankboard fence through some of those sections that, that are between the entrance ways to the rail yard, but any of these items, Trey, I will have to probably extend and call them for permission, such as trees. They, I mentioned trees to him the other day, and they said, John, we don't mind trees specifically, but any tree you might plant in our right of way, if we would allow it, you'd have to deal with our state arborist to get her out here to talk to me about anything like that. So most of it, anything that we do other than clean up, I'm going to have to get further permission to put obstacles in there right of way.
Okay.
Okay?
John, I just want to point out, you probably noticed, paragraph ten requires you to get a notarized permission from CSX first, so.
Why?
Because they own the property.
They don't, they don't own the right of way.
Well, the right of way is just the right of way across somebody else's property. It's not an easement. So they own, the right of way gives them the right to put a road there, but it doesn't give you the right to do anything.
Well, that's, that's what Stephanie Winter's going to do on Wednesday at two PM, to tell CSX official, and I've, I've already emailed him today, put him on notice what I'm looking for, and all we're looking for is cooperation from CSX to let us do this. And if CSX has a problem with it, then they're probably telling us on Wednesday, which, okay? But you hear that, Stephanie?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. So otherwise, we have a motion, a second. Any further questions?
I just, one other question, just for clarification. So this is easements, right of ways, it's not like you're going to show up on somebody's property and cut their grass, right?
There's no one there to show up and cut.
No private property improvement or anything, just for public sake, that we're saying that out loud?
Yeah, no, I don't plan on cutting anyone's grass. I don't plan on cutting any residential grass, because the only grass I see up there is in front of CSX property and then a mess from there on out. So that's all I see so far.
I just don't want the public to think that we're going on private property-
Right.
-to improve that property at the city's expense.
I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay. We still have a first and a second. Any further discussion? If not, I was in favor of the motion, but allow me to proceed, pursue this permit. Let me know, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you so much. Okay. Anyone else, anyone else have any unfinished business tonight that you, that you would consider unfinished? If you do, speak, speak up. I will tell you some unfinished business, just to bring it up. I've met with the school board superintendent, Mr. Schultz. We've discussed once again the property in front of the school, and that's one most reason I want this one committee to come into session, is I've picked up the plans from the school engineer. We have the plans. Cory looked at them today. We're going to be talking about that, that's actually a carryover from last year, being what to do with the street in front of LaGrange Elementary School. So this committee's going to be discussing that. We're going to be talking with the superintendent further. We're also going to be dealing with Mr. Ken Cade, make sure that Mr. Ken Cade is aware of anything and everything that we're doing there, and make sure he understands, and actually would like to get his approvals to do whatever the council decides to do. So that should be coming forth through a committee, and that's one item that's what I would consider unfinished from last year, but we're going to try to put an end to what is going to go on in front of LaGrange Elementary School. Okay? New business. Anyone having new business tonight?
Can you consider looking into that permit for seventy-one interstate area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm going to look in that tomorrow. But thank you, Trey, for pushing that, because that's, it needs to be done.
Sure thing.
Okay. Any other new business?
I have something. I know I got an email about this, and I was wondering if we had any thoughts on establishing a City of LaGrange scholarship for seniors who are grad-
a City of LaGrange scholarship for seniors who are graduating. I saw that the City of Peewee Valley and Crestwood have these and I didn't know, being new here, if there was a reason we did not. I also saw LaGrange Elementary PTA offers a scholarship and I just think, being the chair of the Youth Outreach Committee, that that might be something appropriate to introduce to the full council for discussion.
Actually, I think any scholarship activity or any scholarship support, if in fact is permissible under law from city government.
I don't think it is.
If it's, if it's permissible.
I don't know how other cities do it, but I've, I've always been told it wasn't permissible.
So, I, I would ask Mr. Beach Cragmire to research that.
Okay.
And I appreciate their recommendation and yes, we all received the same letter for this support, but I'm not quite sure if city government can start providing scholarship support.
I'll, I'll look into it. I mean, I know the LaGrange Rotary gives $2,500 to the Odom County Community Scholarship Fund, so.
I know they do, but they're not a governmental entity.
Correct.
They're, they're-
I'm just trying to let her know that we're, LaGrange is not doing nothing, you know, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
But no, I mean, you'd have to, it would have to be appropriated through the, through the, through the budgetary process and we'll have to look into that.
Well, first of all, we've got to look at, look at it, was it legal or not? So, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
So, that's, that will be the determination whether it's even permissible, Andrea.
Okay.
But I appreciate your, your-
That's helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Because I think we all received the same letter.
Yes.
Okay. That's on our new business. Anything else on our new business? Okay. We're down to announcements. Trey, would you like to start with any announcements from your area or anything you would like to announce to the citizens or to the public tonight?
Other than the committee meetings, I think those are the only announcements I'd have at this time.
Okay. How about you, Mary?
Only the committee meeting that I mentioned earlier on the 12th.
Okay. Leslie? How about you, Mayor? Mayor Davenport?
Nothing except the committee meeting, we'll be having the 13th.
Okay. Elsie Carter, you have any announcements tonight? Nothing? Debbie?
No.
Bill?
I'd like to say thank you for the people who came this evening.
Andrea.
I'm right on the corner. Mention about the bags out in front.
Stephanie said, mention about the bags out in front. Is they're from the LaGrange Public Bus. Did they have the yellow cookies in them that you said you were going to bake?
[laughing]
Huh? Because you said you were going to make yellow cookies. Okay. But everyone, please pick up a bag and if you can support our bus service, please do. My announcements are, is Kentucky Utilities, I want to read this letter. Dear City of LaGrange, congratulations. Your application for the business rebate program has been approved by Kentucky Utilities Company. The energy efficiency upgrades you've made to your business facility at the address below have earned a rebate in the amount of $3,725. A rebate check will be mailed to the provided address in approximately four to six weeks. The service address for this rebate is 307 West Jefferson Street. Thank you for your participation. Please keep our program in mind if you plan to make any additional improvements in the future. From Mary Hartleach, Business Rebate Program Manager for Kentucky Utilities. Also, I have attached a rebate for the city for LED, City for the Community Center, Public Works, Police Station, Welcome Center. The purchase for 620 bulbs was $4,247 minus the rebate of $37.25, which put us paying $5.22 for all the bulbs out of pocket. That's roughly 84 cents per bulb. The reason I'm bringing this to your attention is I want to say that Heather, where's Heather? I thought she, you worked on this, didn't you? Did you, you with Corey, you and Corey Rusneck and, and thank you all for changing these light fixtures out and getting this rebate from Kentucky Utilities. We need to be doing more of that and I guess we will continue to. I'm just trying to get through announcements. I want to congratulate the Odom County High School Boys Basketball Team. We got some of those boys that live right here in our city and the one young man who hit the three pointer the other night when they were two down in overtime, that the older mirror evidently was there and got the video of it because I saw where WLKY or someone asked you for their permission if they could use your video on their station. You all granted the permission. That's very nice that we did, but the young man lives in Cherrywood and I've actually seen that young man out shooting basketballs when it was below zero, but yet he hit a three pointer at the buzzer the other night to allow Odom County to get, I guess, to the finals Saturday night. So, I would like public to congratulate Odom County High School Boys because a lot of them live here in our town for their run at the eighth region championship, which they were defeated Saturday night by a good team from Walton, Zerona. I keep on forgetting this, but I've got to pay thanks to a person, a foundation in our city, the Louise Head Duncan Trust, wrote them a letter and these are signage for our historical areas of our town.
Very.
I don't know if the council wants to approve these in their present form. If you have any suggestion, want to amend them somewhat, but the reflective, Corey Rusneck put this together and the Louise Head Duncan Trust gave us $5,000 to purchase as many of these we can, up to $5,000, to go in our historical neighborhoods. Jay Hall specifically was driving through the town and said, John, I think this, this sign in this part of town needs to look more historical. He said, I, we've got a little bit of money left and if you would give us a letter for grant of $5,000, we, I'd probably get it granted for you. He did. So, hope you all like these signs. I wanted to get paid compliments to them tonight publicly because we always thank everybody that will give us some money, free.
Free money.
So, thank you so much to the Louise Head Duncan Trust for this great gift of $5,000 to buy these signs right here, up to $5,000 worth. Okay. It's been a good evening, I think. I hope you all do. Once again, older mirror, we're going to try to do better. You know, that's all I can tell you. We're going to try to do better and do what we're supposed to do and I'll take the blame for it. So, thank you all so much for covering our meetings. I'll give one last public comment. Anybody have anything else they'd like to say tonight before we adjourn? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Debbie Pollard, is her second.
Seconding.
Second by Trey Kammer. Discussion, all I can say is thank you all very much for coming and see you next April, April Fool's Day. Thank you very much. Good night.